We are conducting our regularly scheduled meeting for the month of March. Copies of our agenda on the back table if you'd like to follow along. So if you would now please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, Councilman Poole will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Set a bow here. Our eyes and everlasting God, we thank you for your grace and mercy. We thank you for allowing us to come together once again for meeting to represent this town and its people. We thank you for allowing us to do the good thing, to make the good decisions, and that all would be a part of it. We thank you for allowing us to let this town grow, and we pray that you will show us the way, help us to understand. No, Father, we just want to thank you for this board, and we want to thank you for everyone that participates on the board and in the community. We give you the honor and all the praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Next item is approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain to approve those listed on your agenda for the season.
Mayor, just had one minor correction.
Okay.
On February 12th minutes, under important and timely matters, I made a comment, the comment that I meant to say was Edington-Chowan partnership and not different organizations. Different organizations was quoted in the minutes. So I meant to say Edington-Chowan partnership, but they're here tonight anyway, so.
Okay, you'll find out everybody.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, good.
That's only.
So noted, though, we'll make that change for you. Anybody, take a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right, thank you very much. As is our custom, this board over the years has asked those organizations to whom we give annual support dollars to the benefit and betterment of this community to come forward and report to the council about your accomplishments in the past year or your look toward the future or both. And tonight, we've asked the Eden-Chowan Partnership to make its presentation, and that will be done by the Executive Director, Mallory Denham.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Yes. It's been really a whirlwind year, year and a half for me here in Eden. A lot going on, a lot of wonderful things happening. It's the prettiest town I've ever been around. The people are wonderful, and amazing things are starting to happen. So without any further, I'm gonna kind of go through my presentation. No doubt that Eden and Chowan Partnership, better known as the Partnership, has begun to forge a path for the future of our community. There we go. Back in October, we announced that Megapulse had picked Eden as its temporary headquarters. At this point, it looks like it's going to be their permanent headquarters, but we won't make any promises just yet. But Megapulse is a family-owned Australian company. It's opened its headquarters here in Eden. The company has set up its distribution through Colony Tire and hopes to be building their product in the United States in the next five years. They make an electric battery component that extends the life of a lead-based battery, which 95 percent of all batteries produced are lead-based, so they'll be around for a while. They do have a website address, and you can read a little more about their company. At this point, if they construct a manufacturing plant here, we're looking at another 20 to 25-plus jobs. So, and that does not count distribution and the family members that'll be here to work. So that's one positive. Second positive is Partnership helped establish Dateless Yachts. Worked very hard, the city did, and the county did. They're finally up and running. Kind of a little history of them, they're the world's first DMVGL-certified hydrogen machine, which is a motor. They're making a D-80 yacht, which is about 80 foot wide, looks more like a catamaran, a massive catamaran. They're gonna use hydrogen as its fuel source. You sail about anywhere in blue water with this boat without emitting any fossil fuel. With the help of the panels and the wind and the generators that they're working on, again, this is gonna be an energy-generating vessel with renewable energy only, at no cost to the carbon atmosphere. It's kind of fascinating, I've been in and out of the plant. They have created some amazing things, and I think they're just now scratching the surface of what they can do for the future. Second is the expansion of Colony Tire. Everybody knows and has seen, I imagine most of you went there to the open house, a massive building, just a beautiful piece of metal on our landscape. It's a plus-plus-plus for us. Next, from this past year, Jumbo Jumbo's opened up their new addition. They've also begun construction on two new additions, one on the existing old plant and one on the new facility. Of course, Jumbo Jumbo's has been a mainstay in Eden for years, and just a beautiful building. Last, Regulator is fit, or is set to finish their expansion in March, which will be later on this month. They are gonna build a new boat, it's already out actually, it's a 26XO. Everybody, everywhere I've gone on the coast has heard or knows something about Regulator, so that's pretty impressive. Just, let's go back. Any questions so far? So those are just a few of the positive things that the town, the county, and the Partnership have been involved in. You know, we've helped just about every step of the way on most of these projects. So are there any questions as far as the new expansions, constructions? And I'll get to the job total a little later on in my presentation. So, big question is, where is the grocery store? Well, first, let me tell you that the town, the county, and the Chamber and the Partnership have and will continue to work diligently on bringing a new grocery store to Eden. We have identified sites, we have targeted companies, investors, and developers, and they'll be reviewing the new projects as we keep putting them forward. Understand, the grocery business is based on return on investment, that's what drives the private sector. Make sure you know that we are leaving no stone unturned, I promise you. And it has certainly been a pretty combined effort between the city, the county, and the Chamber, and the Partnership, and all of you, and we will get there eventually, just no time frame. All right, kind of recap of two new manufacturing companies, Megapulse and Dateless Yachts, have come to town. Three majors expansions of existing companies, Regulator, Jumbo Jims, and Colony Tire, total of 20-plus new jobs in our economy. Counting the jobs that these companies were looking for earlier, we're up somewhere close to 300 by the time everything's finished and online and running. And understand that these companies are always looking for new talent, every day. If you have somebody looking for a job, send them to them or send them to us, we'll steer them right to the place, because they are always looking for talent. Both Regulator and Dateless were awarded building reuse grants by the North Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority. Anne Marie, the county, and I all assisted in putting those applications together. The Partnership has been awarded a Golden Leaf Infrastructure Improvement and Design Grant for the industrial parks. We're gonna put utilities in and do some design work. We'd hope to get more, but we kind of have to take what we can get sometimes. Eventually, we'll have the industrial park shovel ready, we hope, in the near future. Partnership's worked with the county, the town, and wildlife to rework the boat slips on the sound. Those are the boat slips the Partnership owns out by the Albemarle Boat Company. We had to do some dredging, we're gonna have to rework some walls and so forth to make it a little more accessible for not only bigger boats, but Albemarle boats. Here in the last six months, we've worked with the high school, the College of the Albemarle, the Northeast Workforce Development Board, the Chamber, and the manufacturers here to set up entry-level work curriculum through the college. Basically, what this is, high school students can go to the CLA in the morning or afternoon, they have set a definite program, and take some basic welcome-to-work programs. We're talking about resume building, how to act at a job, your responsibilities as an employee, what to expect, measurements, some tow motor skills, and they'll be certified, actually, tow motors, once they've completed it. And there'll be some other courses as we go along, but it looks like it's gonna be a very good program. I do want to mention that at the onset of this, the high school, through the Superintendent's Office, has set up a new program this year that will be announcing and awarding those students who are not necessarily going to college or to the military, but are going to the workforce. They'll be giving them a lot of praise for their choice to do so. So that'll be a very positive thing. Other things we did this year, we completed a comprehensive broadband study with the Chamber and Eastern Shores Communications. This project let us know what we had as far as assets in the vertical and horizontal field, as far as cable, tires, and so forth that we can use in the future. We were really fishing around for grant money. We found out because certain populations are served that it's kind of very confusing, but that's something we're working very hard on, will continue to work on. It did help us understand a whole lot about the internet world and so forth. We are continuing to pursue retirees to move to Eden-Chowan County through personal contact, the Ideal Living Shows and mailers. A big part of my organization is an older group that likes to see retirees come in and join them, and it's a wonderful source of not only energy, knowledge, but also revenue. So we'll continue to work hard on that. We also had our first-ever Leaders Lunch in May. It turned out wonderfully, we ended up with 60 people there total. We had that at Jumbo Jumbo's. We'll probably do something similar this year when Regulator gets online. We created a new website, which is First Class. I've got the address there if anybody wants to visit it. I've heard comments from not just within the town, but all over, some of the friends back home where I come from that have looked at it, pretty impressed with it. It is a very professional website. And we've also created a Facebook page where we can connect with some of the younger generation. That ends this part of the presentation about what the Partnership has done, what we'll continue to do. We have a whole new list of goals that we hope to achieve this year. 2018 may be hard to follow up with, we had a lot of successes, but we will continue. I do want to leave you off with one last. We finished this video about March, and actually, it said, just about all over the United States, along with all over some foreign countries, had a lot of good response out of that, very professional done, it shows how beautiful this town is, et cetera. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Councilmembers of Mallory? Okay, hearing none, thanks a lot, Mallory. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all the work that you and your board members are doing to help make our community more prosperous. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir, and enjoy it all the way. It's wonderful to be here.
All right, good to have you aboard. I mentioned one thing before we get back to the agenda. Mallory covered it under the heading of May Luncheon. At that May Luncheon, it was held at Jumbo's Jumbo's new training center room, and he mentioned there were a good number of people in attendance. But the byproduct of that is this program that he told you about relative to the apprenticeship that's being, program that's being put together with the cooperation of the school system and the college. So there was an outcry, really, from all of the leading employers in this community about their inability to fill job openings that were desperately needed in a way, too. When you build a nice new building, you gotta fill it up with capable workers, and that's becoming more and more of a challenge. And as you all know who follow the news cycles, that's not peculiar to Edington and Chowan County, it's a nationwide problem, yes, but our community has taken a forward step to help remedy that for our local companies and businesses that are seeking new employees. I think it'll be a huge help. Thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
One other thing I had, I jotted down while Mallory was talking. In an effort to get the word out in a more precise and targeted manner, the Partnership is gonna be meeting with and ideas will be incorporated into the position our new media marketing person is working on, that, as you may recall, that came from the recommendations of the marketing study that was done for here a year ago. And so he'll be adding some business efforts to and exposure to his audience once it gets up and running. We have a time taking on that, Anne Marie?
We're wrapping up the contract agreement, hopefully in the next, you know, in the next week or so, then we'll be ready to launch.
Great. Thanks again, Mallory. We'll turn now to our committee reports, and I'll turn the meeting over to our committee chairman. First, the Administrative Committee chaired by Councilman Biggs, please, sir.
Mayor, we have three items on the agenda tonight, and actually, the first item, we are going to recommend that this go back to the Administrative Committee. There's some small niches, things that need to be fixed, so staff is gonna have that taken care of for us by our March 25 meeting, and we will review that again. So I'll move on to item two. It's recommended that the council accept a gift of a trailer from Regulator Marine as presented. I'm gonna put that in a form of a motion, but as y'all will remember, Regulator Marine was kind enough to extend a gift of a really nice trailer to the fire department for them to house the Rio, the 1923 Rio, and be able to pull up to the fairs and festivals and parades and the such. Ran into Joan somewhere recently at a meeting here, and thanked her and Owen both for the opportunity for this gift. So again, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Motion. Motion and a second to accept the trailer as given by Regulator Marine to our fire department. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Okay, and number three, we have tonight is recommended that the county, the council award bids for the 2017 NC Housing Finance Agency Housing Rehabilitation Grant as presented. And as y'all will remember from committee meetings again, that it was Mr. Holly's Construction Company, William Holly Construction Company, that has been recommended to receive that bid, and I will put that also in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to award the bids to the Holly Construction Company to fulfill the housing agency rehabilitation grant. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to thank Councilman Poole for looking over those contracts for us, thank you for that. We realize that's your expertise, and we appreciate you sharing that with us.
You're right. Further comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
That's all we have, I'm sorry.
Okay, no.
Sitting here in my daze.
I was sitting here making a note myself. Public Works Committee will report next, and that's chaired by Councilman Stiles, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. We only have one item on the agenda tonight, excuse me, and it's recommended that council approve a grant agreement with the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management for our Queen Anne Creek Bulkhead as presented, and I will put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the grant agreement with Coastal Management for the Bulkhead as described. Any further questions, comments on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dixon chairs our Finance Committee. Anne Marie, could you cover those?
Sure.
Since it deals directly with our budget.
Yes, Mayor. At the Finance Committee meeting, the committee reviewed the contract from Donna Winborn CPA to do the 2018-19 audit. This is part of a three-year agreement that the council had with Ms. Winborn, and the committee recommended approval of the agreement as presented.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
What's our audit?
All right, second.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, no?
Mayor, the next item that the Finance Committee reviewed was approval of a grant agreement with the North Carolina Governor's Crime Commission, and we had put in a grant to purchase approximately seven additional surveillance cameras that would supplement approximately seven cameras that we have now online, and the committee recommended approval of the grant. I believe it was for $24,500, and it does not require a local match, so we like those kind of grants.
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion and a second to proceed with the purchase of the surveillance camera.
It's good to have them coming in here.
Yeah, it really is. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
How much more room do we have for how many more cameras on our current system?
Aye, that's a good question. I would have to check, Chief and I will check with net change, our local company is helping us support it. I don't think it, I think we can keep adding, we can keep building, we'd have to buy more components to support it, but I'll verify that.
How many cameras do we have right now? How many cameras?
We own, I think, seven, but then there are some businesses that have added cameras that have allowed us access, so we have, probably can monitor Chief, about 12?
We have enough space for the seven cameras. We still have at least two or three more slots under net change, so those seven cameras won't keep causing us to have to get rid of the other camera. It's just a bigger screen.
Next item, please. Didn't we vote on that?
You did.
We did.
Yeah, I thought so.
The question came after, okay. We, the Finance Officer, Virginia Smith, has prepared a budget amendment to show the revenue coming in for the Crime Commission grant, and then the expenditure of the line item, so we recommend approval of the budget amendment as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second for the budget amendment. Questions, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, thank you.
Mayor, the committee also reviewed a proposed lease agreement between the town and the North Carolina Department of Transportation to occupy a portion of the garage, or an area in the garage. I'm looking for Harry, there he is. Our airport manager's been working with DOT on this project, they'll pay $200 a month, and you recall that. Our town attorney reviewed the agreement that DOT prepared, and I believe Hood had noted eleven, he had 11 comments to the agreement, and we sent those to DOT, and they responded affirmatively by accepting and making changes to the agreement to 10 of the 11 points that Hood raised. I reached out to DOT's leasing agent yesterday and asked for clarification about why they did not address the did not address the comment that Hood made in the agreement. It states that if the town were to be liable for anything that caused a fire, if we did something, we were negligent, that we would be responsible for any damages to DOT's personal equipment. And Hood wanted that to be reciprocal. And DOT has, she has not yet responded to it. So I know Harry's anxious to get this grant, this approved, this lease approved. And I would just ask if you would consider that when I get the response back from DOT that I share it with Hood and if Hood's okay with it, then would be okay with the lease. If he's not, then we would bring it back to you.
So assuming that all that has worked out, will you poll us for a vote or we'll do it here?
Can you do it, contend, you would authorize approval, execution of the agreement contingent upon approval from the town attorney on section eight.
Okay, we can do that. Chair would entertain a motion to that effect, that we accept the lease agreement with the condition that both parties agree on the item eight that's still in question.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Very good.
Mayor, the last item that the finance committee reviewed was a travel request and approval for attendance of the mayor to travel to Seattle the end of this month to participate, to be on the program at the National Main Street Conference.
So they're gonna hear Eatonson at the, this national conference?
Yes.
This is good.
And the committee recommended approval of that.
So move.
Motion and a second to approve the travel expense. Any further questions? All in favor, aye? Opposed, no?
Is he going first class?
No.
They bought me a one-way ticket. What is that all about?
That's a quick no, Mayor.
She didn't spell the reason.
No, she did.
Okay, thank you very much. We're turning out a new business, item seven on your agenda sheet, Anne Marie, and if you would please cover those four items.
I'd be happy to, Mayor. We were in the process of closing out our grant agreement for the new playground. That is just fantastic and we thank the council so much for the investment that they've made in that infrastructure. And the gal that was helping us with the closeout said you, that we had some money that had not been spent and if we prepared a budget amendment that, or a budget request that they would try to amend the scope of our agreement. So we prepared that and it took a while. We had to get some legal certifications from the town attorney, but basically we're adding about $14,000 to the project where we will purchase picnic tables, will replace our aging picnic tables and then add a few ADA accessible picnic tables, some new benches and also replace, I know the fire chief will be happy to replace the outdoor grills that have lived beyond their useful life. And so we ask that you prepare or that you approve the budget amendment, so we'll add the revenue coming in and then also on the expense side, the expenditures.
Okay, entertain a motion to that effect.
So move.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right.
And Mayor, we are asking that the council prepare, approve, excuse me, we've already, we've already prepared it, a revision to our capital project ordinance pertaining to the renovations and upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant. We are in the process of applying for hopefully lots of grant money, more grant money than loan money. We're anxious to hear what USDA is going to approve, but this would fund the upgrades, the whole, you know, redoing of the existing wastewater treatment plant, converting from trees to grass. And so you had previously approved an amendment to the engineering services agreement with the Wooten Company. And as you know, the town, all towns, local governments are required to fund the engineering reports that are required as part of the funding agencies review. So we prepared the budget amendment to cover the additional engineering work that's required by USDA and we ask that you approve this amendment to the existing capital budget ordinance.
Very good. Chair would entertain a motion to do so.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions about that?
When is this targeted to be completed, Anne Marie?
Well, the, the real target is to get the grant approval, the grant secured. And I would hope that within the next, you know, 60 to 90 days we have no, then we'll have to go through the financing, well, I'm sorry, no, then the engineering work would be done and then we'd have to go get approval from the LGC. But I think the goal is to be under construction sometime in 2020, 2021.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to proceed with the development of the grant loan improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
I think we, yeah, we approved.
You did, we had a motion and a second, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay. Just need a vote.
All right, any further comments? All in favor, aye? Any opposed, no?
And Mayor, this next resolution is tied to that project and council is aware from previous capital projects that when you, you spend a lot of money upfront on engineering reports and you are allowed to reimburse yourself when the grants and the debt proceeds are received, so long as there has been a resolution adopted by the council declaring your intent to reimburse yourselves. And that's a very important IRS rule. And when we did the water treatment plant upgrades report, you remember Connor Crew was here from bond counsel and he required, he wanted to see that you had adopted that resolution because he had to submit a report to the IRS saying that you were going to be using proceeds from the loan to reimburse yourself. So it's, it's a housekeeping matter, but it's, it's an important one. And we want to make sure that you will be reimbursed for those engineering fees. So we ask that you pass that resolution. That is in the packet.
Was that a move?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second, should we give a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Going back to the improvement to the wastewater treatment plant, we go from raising trees to growing grass, is that right?
That was the recommendation, hay, yep.
Okay, that was my question. What, what kind of revenue can we get from growing grass? But it's, it's not lawn grass, it's?
It's hay, yeah.
Hemp.
You ought to get a hit there. Good try, Mayor.
Okay. All righty, council members, it's your turn now to bring forward any items you see or believe to be timely and important.
Mayor, I had a couple.
Excuse me, just one more item under new business, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I see.
One more budget amendment. Can I review that real quick?
Sure.
This is truly a housekeeping matter. The, when the town was reimbursed for expenses that we had in responding and recovering from Hurricane Matthew, that revenue was reimbursed to us in 2017-18. The expenses were incurred in 1716 and the, so the, that revenue was counted as cash was used to calculate your fund balance, your reserve, but it's still sitting in a separate fund. And so Virginia is asking that this budget amendment be made to close out that old Hurricane Matthew project ordinance and that, we reviewed it with auditor and they are fine with it. And I'm sorry that it doesn't do anything for the, for our cash position, but it does kind of clean up the books, so to speak. So we recommend approval of the budget amendment as presented.
Okay, entertain a motion to that effect.
So move.
Motion and a second to close out the FEMA Preparedness Fund. Any questions, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All righty, now back to what I stated previously. Council members, you have anything you want to bring? Yes, sir?
Just a couple. Anne Marie, from a financial perspective, are we still on target for the Phase Two Road Resurfacing Project this year?
We are actually going to be meeting with USDA to go over the timeframe. We'll hope to have a report for you at either your March 25 meeting or your April regular meeting, but we're looking, we're, we're gonna have to go back to the LGC and so we're gonna try to get back there as soon as we can. Yep.
Okay. Another question I had has to do with the group hub. Has Mr. Glover communicated with you or Elizabeth about getting together and meeting with the Board of Adjustment, the Historic Preservation Commission? Are we making any headway there?
We have been, I've been in communication with his attorney, with Mr. Glover's attorney. I transmitted the applications to him and also conveyed the message from the council that you all asked staff to work to help expedite the review and to, you know, schedule special meetings. So we're, we're waiting for a response back, but the ball is.
He's aware of the deadline.
He's aware of the deadline.
He's aware of the deadline.
And they have the applications, yes.
I would like to recommend, I think somebody brought this up, truck driving schools. Yeah, and I don't think it's, it's school within 25 miles of there, or even 50 miles unless, I think it's going to Virginia. But I think this would be a great opportunity for Eatonson to have a truck driving school. Most, most suppliers are being hauled by tractor trailers and there's a whole lot of morality. So the young people, a lot of young people that I know that could keep a job or whatever and try, live at the school and they successfully drive short lines and long lines. I think it's good for the town and good for the people here. If we get, I think we have to do it because somebody else might take that idea and go ahead and do it, that's to cut short. They're like, the grocery store here, once you get a school here, you gotta look back and imagine when they yell.
Yeah.
Our community college, the College of the Abilma, is looking at a truck driver training curriculum as well as a short-term CDL training class. And there's been some news articles about COA investigating that and commission, or actually the chair of the Choone County Board of Commissioners is on the COA Board of Trustees and has advocated for that. And she reached out to the mayor and I at a partnership meeting recently to confirm would the town still be interested in making the old runway at the airport available for the training? And talked to Harry Davis, our airport manager, and we absolutely would. We did that years ago when the college ran a program. So there's been a lot of reports statewide on the need for qualified transportation logistics. So I think that the college is digging deep into that and hopefully will move forward with the program, but we'll certainly stay in touch with COA and with Commissioner Kersey on that.
Reverend Poole, to add to that, if I could, right now today, there are over 25,000 openings for truck drivers today. They, all of our community college systems, because I personally work with Runup Choone and also Martin Community, are also looking into doing it, like Kipson has done and Nash Community College. So I, I think it's getting to be now where it's such dire straits that all of our community colleges will certainly be looking to, to put a program in like that. And, you know, a lot of people probably can't do it, but I, I don't know how close you can follow this, Walmart is now paying their truck drivers $90,000.
Wow.
So it's not, it's not something to sneeze at if you can be a truck driver. It's really not. If you can be away from home that much and, you know, but there's, there's some advantages, certainly financial advantages to it. And again, it's, it's major, major shortage. And I was at the ports of Wilmington last week and it's just amazing how much more traffic could come if they could find more truck drivers.
Yeah.
And it's the same way with the Norfolk ports and Morehead ports and everywhere else, but it's, it's a major problem across the country right now.
Now, I spoke to a couple of drivers in last week and one of them was home, driving to their home every night.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good opportunity for the union if you get, that, see where you get that school. I know if we had one here, I'd just say you wouldn't be down with it as a city, so.
Yeah, might come out of retirement. Just as a closing comment or thought on that, it reminds me of, I guess it's going on three years ago, when we were trying to help the people out on Peanut Drive by getting the road resurfaced out there. I went out and I met with each individual company and to get a rough estimate on the number of trucks that were used in Peanut Drive a year. And it was well over 9,000. And then we took that information, we wanted to have that information because we had set up a meeting with Commerce, the Commerce Secretary and the Transportation Secretary in Raleigh. And we got the, obviously got the approval for the upgrade. But during that process, Jimbo's had just started on their expansion. And Hal Burns said to me that, I gave him the number that I had come up with from visiting the various businesses. He said, when we get done with our plants here, we'll be utilizing 9,000 trucks all by ourselves. And since then, Regulator has expanded and Jimbo's continues to expand, so clearly a need. Anyway, good point, Reverend. I hope it happens too. Anybody else? Okay, time for public comment. Anybody here this evening that would like to address the council about your concerns or have questions? Now is your time. We simply ask that you come to the podium and state your name. We'll be happy to hear your thoughts. Okay, seeing no one stepping forward, council members, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank y'all very much.